A couple of housekeeping things before we get started today. Oh, hello. We are, I just want to remind everyone that we are being broadcast. And this meeting is also going to be translated into Spanish. And just a reminder for anybody who is listening to this meeting, there's additional information and documents available on the district website regarding this meeting. And I don't know if there's, doesn't appear to be any members in the public here, but we have our comment cards if there were someone here. I, we're on to, oh, the other thing is we're going to try and keep our, our time today. Just try to be cognizant of it since we do have a pretty solid end time of two o'clock. So I don't want to try and limit discussion, but I just wanted everybody to be reminded, we're going to, we're going to wrap up here at two o'clock today. All right. Number three is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay. Moving on to number four, which is public comment. If there are no people here for a public comment, I will preclude reading what the instruction is on public comment. And I'll represent, there doesn't appear to be anyone here today to give us public comment and we'll move on to number five. Items for board discussion, which is 5.1, potential product, project delivery methods of construction for building K. And this is all for information today. And I'm going to pass it over first to Rami and, and we'll go from there.
And also just a reminder that because of the taping, everybody does need to, we're sharing microphones. So if you'll pass them back and forth, so your voice is projected for the taping, we'd appreciate it. I just want to thank all of you for coming this evening, or this afternoon. Our, our goal really is to make sure that we all have a shared, common understanding of what the project delivery models are. And our lens today is really building K at Alhambra High School. That's a project that we are specifically talking about, although the, the information that is being shared certainly can be applied to in other contexts. Our focus today is building K. Diane has outlined and has put together a presentation today that's going to kind of take us back a little bit in history. So that we all have that same shared, common knowledge. And then based upon that, we'll also have some clarification today from our legal counsel, DWK. And also from, we'll be looking at some of the historical parts about this particular decisions that we've made. And we'll be exploring project labor agreements and what the implications are again, as it relates to this specific project. So with that, Diane?
Thank you. Good afternoon. So I'm going to start off with a historical overview of where we are with board history. And then Jorge Rico from HY Architects is going to do a presentation update on building K at Alhambra High School. Then John Navarro is going to have, and these are all short presentations due to time, on the guiding principles that was previously presented to the board on least leaseback choices. Then I'm going to do project delivery methods. Then we're going to have a lease lease update, lease leaseback update by Deirdre Sakai, DWK. Project labor agreements, and then it will be the board discussion.
Let's not give the historical, can you put up the first presentation?
It's the historical overview. It's the far left. There you go. Uh huh. So, oh, just this. How do I turn this on? I just need to get the clicker to work. Okay. Okay, so I wanted to start with a little history. The board since October of 2011 has had several presentations on the items we're going to be discussing today. So in October of 2011, there was a project delivery methods presentation where the board had this on the agenda. Then in February of 2012, there was an agenda item and discussion on alternative delivery methods for measure K and the least leaseback method. Then moving to February of 2015, last year, there was a project labor agreement presentation on how they benefit the district, the community and the local economy. Then in March of last year, on the second, and the board meeting, there was a second project labor agreement on a record of failure and discrimination. So it was the proponent argument and then the opponent argument. Also on March 2nd of 2015, there was a presentation on the guiding principles for if lease leaseback was chosen, why do we do that? And then this past October, we had another lease leaseback update by Glenn Gloob from DWK. And Deirdre Sakai is from DWK for our current update that will come following. So this was just part of the background information, but I wanted to point out, if you look on this under, it has the project name. So say under John, you're elementary, it says replace two boilers and renovate mechanical equipment. So if you look at delivery method, the DBB is the design bid build. So I'm not going to go through all of them. But what I wanted to show you was at John Sweat, we have the roofing project and the HVAC, which is happening this summer. And the energy management system, they're all designed bid build. At Los Juntas Elementary right now, again, the HVAC, the air conditioning is designed bid build. And then just looking at Alhambra High School, what we're here today is the board's having a discussion meeting and it's undecided what the delivery methods will be. And at Vicente Breones for our new high school that's being built there, it is a lease leaseback. And then, sorry. So back to history a little bit. So when phase one of measure K, after it was passed, there was a master panning process. And one of the pieces was the board and staff were looking for a cost of effective solution to how to build the Vicente Breones campus. So one of the things that was done was there was research on these pre-check buildings, which is this modular design system that's built on site. So district staff and board members took, had a visit at the San Bruno School District to look at a PC building. And following that, the district chose to approve a budget for a PC building for the Vicente Breones campus. So that was how it was decided to use this type of building. It fit the budget and it fit the parameters and scope of project. Okay, then phase two. So last March and April, the board went and reviewed all the phase two projects. And there was a discussion of, you know, how are we going to allocate funds for Alhambra High School? And again, it was looking at a new classroom building, which were called building K. And it was decided that the PC building concept would fit the budget parameters and scope of the project. So the phase two budget was approved for building K based on the PC building. And then in summer of 2015, for our new building K, the design work began with the architects, the bond team and the principal, Tom Doppie, and staff and administration at the site. And during the fall and winter, the district team has worked closely with HY Architects and Jorge Rico to meet the budget, the facility and the educational needs. So there's some meetings on educational specifications, on, you know, how to best fit it into where, you know, the needs of the school and facility needs. And of course, at all times, we are constantly looking at the budget. So with building K, our district team now is focused on completing the job within our budget parameters. Beginning site work this summer in order to not have an impact on school operations in the fall. And also it's important to get started to help prevent cost escalation that would occur if the project is delayed. So the design team at this point has prepared this PC modular based design. And increment one, so increment one is the site work. That's all the work that's done, sorry, before the building goes up. And that was submitted to DSA on this fast Friday, which is very good news because that keeps us on schedule. Now, site one work includes, there's going to be a new drop off area and a parking lot area, which Jorge will go into. He'll show you a kind of a schematic design, but there are these new utilities, infrastructure, the earth, they call it the earthwork, which is the grading and building the site pad and then a retaining wall. So these are the things that are part of increment one. And our goal for the bond team is to accomplish these disruptive activities as much as possible when school's not in session. And then what would happen is the building itself, which we call increment two, would be built during the school year. Okay, now we're ready for the H1 presentation.
There, okay. The big driver is anticipating projected growth, which is about 270 students at Alhambra High School. And that translates roughly into eight classrooms. We'd also like to point out that there's a lot of programs that really need support in, in order to be successful, need support with new spaces that are designed to address those program needs as well as be flexible in, for future needs where a program might change. And let's go to the next slide. So a recap, besides building K, which is dark red, well, building K, we're looking at, at seven classrooms, one large computer classroom and two of those seven classrooms are convertible either to a larger, they can remain as classrooms or they can become a larger commons space. So we've incorporated in flexibility in, into that building. There's a few other projects, building J, converting two classrooms into a science lab. We're looking at modernizing H and F. Those are two fairly old buildings, which did not get money, I think, in the last go around. So they do need improvements. Building F predominantly finishes. Building H, we're looking at digital arts and, and media arts on the ground floor, being modernized and reconfigured to better support that instructional program. And the last piece is building D, which has a lot of underutilized space and could, would allow the school to really benefit from converting some of that space into two legitimate standard classrooms and, and adding a workroom to the CAD area. And I, I won't repeat what Diane just said, but this is just a diagram with more detail on, on what goes on in site work for building K. As you can see, a lot of it is, is parking and flat work related, that, and a circular drop off. Next slide. This is just a blow up of, of how building K is subdivided. And as, as you can see, the pale blue, those two classroom spaces are the spaces that are convertible to commons. The, the lavender classes are, one of them is, is dedicated to special ed. The other one is a leadership classroom. And, and then we have our three standard classrooms and the larger computer lab. And I, I really want to stress that the way we're designing these spaces is as flexible as possible if just if future needs change. Diane touched a bit on work and sequencing. And, and what we've got with this schedule is, you know, based on submitting increment one last Friday, we believe we can start that work by, you know, the first week of school being out in June and have all of that heavy, you know, trenching and, and site work occur over the summer. And running on a parallel track, we would imagine that the building, if we go out lease leaseback, would be handed over to a modular contractor in about six weeks approximately. They would take about a month to six weeks to develop and then could have it ready to start erecting on site at the tail end of summer. And just a breakdown of project costs. I've listed, extracted from the measure K allocation, the, the project budget. I've subtracted the soft costs, which is, you know, like what you pay DSA and HY Architects. And what remains are construction costs. And this is just a breakdown of, of where we are with, with our estimates. Thank you.
Can you hear me? We're going to follow up with the guiding principles presentation we did last March. And it goes back to the early on discussions of lease leaseback. And how could we incorporate some of the guiding principles that district established with measure K in doing the contracting? So the guiding principles were basically on qualifications and experience, financial strength, past performance record. But I think one of the biggest items was local workforce participation and how to engage our local community in as much as possible in our projects as we move forward. So that was the goal that we really focused on as we moved forward with the qualification process. Again, just repeating the qualifications, experience, financial strength, past record. Okay, so how did that happen with the projects that we did? So when we went up for the qualifications and hired our general contractors, again, we solicited the local contractors as much as possible. And on some of the bigger projects, we've had contractors who were previously for the district were, are fairly local and very well established. And after we got through the qualification process, as they were soliciting the bids, we also encouraged them to, to use the local vendors, to solicit people that worked for the district a lot and try to incorporate those. So if you go back to the, the first list, now in the PAB, you can see we had a lot of local participation, Alhambra Electric, Martinez Sheet Metal. Our cabinetry company was out of Venetia. Then the rest of the contractors, we call them fairly local. So those are all local contractors that we consider that worked on the project. And we look at the Hillside project, again, Callan and Thompson, Mark Brothers and JV Lucas were all Martinez subcontractors that were included in those projects. The softball field, again, we had Alhambra Electric, Callan and Thompson, and Mark Brothers, again, local Martinez contractors. And when we got to the central plant, which was a heavy mechanical project, the prime contractor was Martinez Sheet Metal as the general, and Alhambra Electric worked under them. And also in the planning process, design for where the maintenance farm developed district standards. So a lot of the systems that we put in are all standardized from site to site. So that was a big focus on it, looking at project costs, best value, self life, lifecycle analysis. So those are all things that are going through the, the planning process to incorporate. So again, the, the recent contracting examples that we have done, we've done the lease leaseback, pre-qualified bidder selection. After the RFU process, again, and selection of the generals, those were primarily done on the phase one, almost all the phase one projects. The district also uses the Uniform Public Costs, Construction Cost Accounting Act. And again, that's a yearly solicitation of vendors to be on our annual list. What that does is gives you elevated bid limits, helps you negotiate contracts under 45,000, where you may not have, mostly for a maintenance project where you might even have a design. So you're really bringing in vendors and negotiating with them. And then you can do informal bidding up to 175,000. And again, that's based on the yearly qualified vendor list that's submitted. We've also done an energy service contract, which was for the PV system. That is a, basically a comparison of a design build project where we issued a, a performance specification. And then lastly, as with Vicente and proposed for building K, is basically a vendor pre-designed, pre-sec modular building. Also specialty projects include like shade structures, typically those are done with specialty type contracts.
Traditional method. There's design bid build, what's called multi-prime or multiple prime, construction management at risk. And then there's the selection process that where it may be negotiated and it's a competitive selection is recommended. And that's lease leaseback and design build. So as I said, the design bid build is a traditional method. And the architect prepares the bid package based on the design scope of work. Then the contractor prepares the bid that coordinates with the bid package. And then the district opens the bids and either awards to what's called the qualified lowest bidder or rejects them all. And they go out to bid again. So it looks like this, basically, you know, we're Martinez Unified, we're the district with the bond team, which is the chief business official, myself and the bond coordinator, Bruce Leslie. We do work with the construction manager, which is RGM and John Navarro. And then what you have is the bid goes out and then you have the general contractor and the subcontractors work with the general. And again, the points for consideration is this is considered the accepted established approach that you see most often. Again, it, you have to choose the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. There's pre-qualifications, which are mandatory. The second method is called multiple prime or multi-prime, which is similar, but with a different twist on design bid build. So instead of using a general contractor, you contract and do bids with different trades. So let me show you. So for example, we have the trade contractor. So there might be an electrical bid, you know, a building bid, you know, things are separated out. And actually, Los Juntas, John, can you explain that this is part of how we did it at Los Juntas? With the multiple, we didn't, with the different, with the trade contractors?
The district office, this building here was built with multiple prime when it was built some 10 years ago or eight years ago.
But didn't we, for Los Juntas, didn't you say we're also took out a piece of the project?
For the multi-prime, this summer, when we're doing the HVAC project, which is primarily all HVAC and a minor amount of electrical and general construction. So we're building that out to the three trades because it didn't make sense to put a big mechanical project under a general. And then we have no control over who the general hires is for mechanical. This way, we're going through the qualified mechanical separately.
Thank you. So again, the, the reason is the district has more control over the, the project and the selection of contractors. And then the district is held responsible for the coordination issues and a pre-qual is mandatory. So then something that we're not, we don't use, but just so you know that it's called CM at risk, which is the construction manager at risk. And basically what it is, is that the construction manager is responsible for the, the trade contractors and the bid would go through the CM. The thing is, is that the CM is going to charge a higher fee to the district if it's done that way. Okay, lease leaseback is one of the selection processes that may need negotiated and a competitive selection is recommended. And I put these slides in just for background, but I'm not going to go through them because Deirdre Sakai is going to do in depth. But this was just. Okay. And then design build is the second of what's called the selection process where it may be negotiated. And John said we did that for our solar, our solar projects.
Yeah, the PV project was a design build.
Yes. So the difference is, is just that it's designed. The district says this is the, the project we want. They have a design team that establishes the criteria and then it goes out to a builder. And it's a selection process. So, you know, again, the district deals with a single point of contact. And the, but the design risk shifts to the design build entity rather than to the district. I'm not gonna, I'm trying to kind of go through. So you have different delivery methods. As you can see from the historical overview, we've chosen different methods for different projects. And that continues to be how the district will be moving forward. Some of the things that, the reason different methods are chosen, it's because of cost, budget, avoiding claims, staying on schedule. And like you can see, sometimes it just has to do with the type of project and what works best for what the project is and that scope. And now we're going to hear on lease leaseback.
Oh, can we ask, can we ask questions right now? I had a question. What's the difference, I mean, other than there's a bid? I want, what's the difference between the design bid build and the design build?
So the design bid build is a hard, what they call a hard bid. So the process is different, a selection process. So for the design bid build, they go out for a hard bid and then the contractors come back and you choose the lowest responsible bidder. they go out for a hard bid and then the contractors come back and you choose the lowest responsive bidder. With the design build, that's a negotiated selection process. So you don't go out for a hard bid. You negotiate with a contractor or you may go out and say, these are the three people that make this item I need or that what I want to do. And then you're going to go to them and say, what do you think you can do this for? And you negotiate. So it's the selection part of it is different.
Can we add something to that? Sure. So for design build, the architect and the contractor are on the same team. There's one contract with the architect and the contractor, whereas in traditional design did build, the district has a contract with the architect and a separate contract with the contractor. So oftentimes, when you get into a dispute, the contractor will blame the architect for the design and the architect will say, no, you didn't build it right. In design bid, I'm sorry, am I saying something that's not not known? So design build is one way to get around that because they can't blame their own entity for not designing it correctly. So that is one thing about design bid build that's different from design build. Okay, so I'm here to talk about the lease leaseback update. Let's see. So the overview of the presentation is we're going to go through, how does the lease leaseback project delivery method work? How does lease leaseback compared to other project delivery methods? Legal and legislative issues and additional considerations. So how it works is are the next two slides. So this is the first five and there's a last one on the the next slide. So the architect starts the design of the project. Then the district selects a builder and the builder now needs to be prequalified, which we'll talk about later. As part of AB five sixty six, which I'm sure you guys heard that a lot. Okay, then third, the builder provides the architect with technical assistance. For example, precheck designs. This is sort of that point where we're talking about after the Davis versus Fresno case before, where it's this idea about whether or not someone who provides preconstruction services has a conflict of interest. But there has been some advisory opinions that said that as long as all you're providing is technical assistance, it may not be a conflict of interest. For the architect completes design and gets DSA approval. And then five, the builder lines up trade contractors and develops a guaranteed maximum price. And for this one, just note that the first tier MEP stands for mechanical, electrical and plumbing. Those subcontractors need to be prequalified. And just the first tier, so the people who are in immediate contract with the developer, the the prime contractor. And then last of all, the district and the builder enter into lease agreements. The lease leaseback agreement is broken into two different documents. So I tried to describe lease and leaseback separately. So lease is that the district leases the project site to the builder to develop it. And then the leaseback is once the lease, the builder finishes the completed facility, they lease it back to the district. That's what lease leaseback means. Okay, I told you it's broken into two different agreements. One is a site lease. And that's where the district is leasing the site to the builder for a dollar a year. It's not for making any money on it, but and it terminates when the facilities lease terminates. So the second document we have is a facilities lease. And what happens in the facilities leases, it tells, it's the agreement about how the building is going to be constructed. And it also now includes a financing component in it. I mean, the district's agreement is to a certain extent always had a financing component, but after Davis versus Fresno, now you have to have a financing component. Before people were sort of questionable whether or not you had to have it. So in the facilities lease, the builder constructs the facility per the plans and specifications, just like they would in a traditional design bid build. The district occupies the completed facility and the builder leases the facility back to the district. And then, once the final lease payment has been made, then the lease is terminated and total reverts back to the district. So this is a general lease leaseback timeline. If you were here in October, you saw this too. It should have, it's sort of like a picture to show you when the certain steps occur. Like I said, we started with the architect design and sometime before DSA approves the plans, the builder would have input. And then after the district has DSA stamped approval, the GMP is prepared and you enter into a lease with the builder. Now, just to let you know, the reason why we don't enter into the leases right up front is the field act requires stamp DSA plans before we can enter into a contract for construction services. So that's why we don't just do it upfront. And then during construction, the owner will make tenant improvement payments, which are similar to other leases, like if you were to do this in a mall, you pay the contractor tenant improvement payments. And then after they move in, there's a certain portion of the GMP that set aside as lease payments. And those start after completion and after the district occupies the the property for a certain amount of time. Okay, advantages. Under lease leaseback project delivery method, the builder is selected by qualifications instead of lowest price. There's a certain amount of cost control with lease leaseback because when you get a design bid build and you get a you get a lump sum price, you don't see how the price is broken out. But with the GMP, you will see how the different subcontractor prices are and what the the builders markups are. There's also more schedule control using lease leaseback as opposed to the traditional design bid build. There's more input on the selection of subcontractors in in the lease leasebacks to the district does. You know, I think we're talking about the local workforce as part of the guidelines that you guys are doing. If you do a design bid build, you have to do, they call it the subletting and subcontracting for practices act. I think you've heard, any contractor over on one half of one percent has to be listed. Bottom line, the builder checks their subs. No input by the district. And then generally, there has been fewer claims and disputes because there's a less contentious relationship with the builder. This is more of a partnering relationship than the traditional design bid build. Okay, so I call it disadvantages, but there are challenges, you know, we can call them challenges. There is a possibility of a legal challenge because, you know, we're not going to ignore the fact that Davis versus Fresno is out there. It's not a Supreme Court case. It hasn't even gone through the whole trial yet. It kind of got pushed out at the early level, just on the pleadings. And then other things that will have to happen going forward are there new labor requirements that may result in increased construction costs and that's under AB five sixty six. And I'll talk about that more going forward. So in Davis versus Fresno, the plaintiff was Stephen Davis, a taxpayer, and he challenged a lease leaseback agreement between Harris Construction and Fresno Unified School District for the construction of a thirty six point seven million dollar middle school. From Davis, I would say just take three things from it. The first is that the district must occupy the completed facility for a period of time after, before final payment can be made. Two, the lease agreement must include financing component. And three, consultants providing preconstruction services are subject to the conflict of interest statutes. Oh, going back just a little bit. For these three things here, there's no rules yet about how long you occupy before a final payment or what the financing has to be in the lease agreement. There's no guidance about that right now. Addressing the Davis requirements. So the occupancy and financing things that I was talking about in the previous slide here, one and two, they're covered in the facilities lease. So it's not something that's up in the air. It'll be concrete in the lease, what those those things, aspects are. And for conflict of interest, there are some rules, we could say, avoid builders owned by former district employees or are responsible for the management of the district funds. Avoid engaging the builder in preconstruction services and that's because of what's going on right now. And if there is a preliminary services agreement, the risk of challenge is time barred by validation of the lease agreements. So validation occurs either by doing a validation action, what occurs as a matter of law after sixty days after you enter into the agreement. So for that, after that sixty days period of time, or if you get a validation order, people cannot challenge you on conflict of interest anymore going forward. So AB five sixty six. So two things to remember about AB five sixty six is you have a prequalification requirement now. Before you use local bond funds, you are exempt from doing prequalification. But as of January first of this year, now the all lease leaseback, regardless of funding source and the size of the contract, it you have to do mandatory qualification of the builder and the first tier MEP subcontractors. And let's see, and the second component is skilled and trained workforce requirement. And that's now it's education code seventeen four oh seven point five. But basically what it is, is that apprentices and journey persons must be used for all apprenticeship occupations. And for this year, thirty percent of the journey persons must have attended an apprentice program approved by the chief of division of apprenticeship standards. Now understand, some journey persons, they got their card by their experience. They didn't have to go and be in the program. They've been, you know, they've been like an electrician for twenty five years. Why do they have to go to a program? But what this requirement is, is that thirty percent of you journey persons at every tier of your of your contractors has to be, at least thirty percent of them have to graduated from an apprentice program. And then the percentage, the note under there is the percentage increases ten percent per year until two thousand nineteen, when it reaches sixty. So it goes up ten percent every year. And I said before, it applies to all tiers of contractors. And then so this next slide is about how do we show or how does the contractor show that they have a commitment to skilled and trained workforce? And there's three ways they can do it. The first way is by having monthly reports showing that the contractor's compliance at every tier. And you have to put contractual provisions in the lease agreements requiring them to do this. We have that in your facilities lease, so that's covered. Number two, contractors can participate in the district's project labor agreement. But the product, the district's project labor agreement has to have the provisions from AB five sixty six in it. It just can't be a project labor agreement. It has to have the same requirements in AB five sixty six. And then the third option is a contractors participate in the contractor project labor agreement. I think the theory is that trade unions will just have a PLA around and the contractor can go to them and say, I want to join your PLA so that I can comply with and do lease leaseback. But that PLA also has to have the provisions from AB five sixty six in it. So they're not going to get around complying with five sixty six by having a project labor agreement. Okay, so additional considerations, if the district change the project delivery method now, is less likely that, and John might be able to talk to this more, but less likely that building cave project would start in the summer of two thousand sixteen. Right, because the
Yeah, because we will be able to move forward with the selection of the PC contractor.
Yeah, because basically the architect would have to probably redesign bid documents because they haven't been asked to do that thus far. And that would take some time and there would be time involved in having to bid the contractor. Generally, bidding takes a little longer than the RFP process. And if the district waits, there's also a consideration that right now there's price escalation for construction costs. So if if you have to wait longer than a couple of months to get it done, or even just for a couple of months, the price could go up.
We're seeing that in the facility subcommittee, the price is already going up the longer we take.
Yes. And then, so just the last consideration, although lease leaseback maybe higher, a higher price upfront because you are trying to get all your change orders out in in the front. The difference may be offset by avoided legal costs by contractor claims that are commonly associated with the traditional design bid build process. So just wanted to leave you with the thought, lease leaseback is still permissible, it's still legal, provided that you follow the few rules that we talked about from the Davis case and the two requirements that we talked about with AB five sixty six.
Okay, is this a good time to do questions about this?
Yeah.
Okay. So I had I had a couple of questions, just why is it that the architect would need to prepare new bid documents to submit to DSA? And how is that different than what was submitted on on last week?
If, okay, so our documents right now are set up for lease leaseback with a PC contractor. If we go, and I want to make sure I understand your question, are you saying developing new documents if we go traditional bid build? The documents we have right now, we hand off to a lease leaseback contractor, they take them, develop them and submit to DSA with a building that's already been prequalified. If we abandon that route, it means we have to design a building all the way through, which would probably add six weeks to two months to the process we already have. So the traditional arrangement would take longer time wise.
Are you saying that the design bid build would eliminate the possibility of the modular building that we've been talking about?
It would not. You 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 could still well there could be modular, but the traditional design bid build is a model typically not based on modular. It's based more on a very custom, one-off building. Yes.
Another way to kind of explain it is, is when we're going out with the negotiated stuff, obviously, not all modular vendors are the same. You know, it's not apples and apples, it's apple and oranges. You got to try to get to a commonality. The difficulty is if you're trying to have three or four people bid the same thing, they don't have the same thing. So you're trying to figure out, how do I bid something? So the only way to kind of do it is try to standardize it on somebody and have the other ones try to tell us how they're bidding something that's comparable and you you get into this evaluation. Right. So it's kind of hard to, is it something to hard bid something that's not the same?
Right.
I had another question. If I remember correctly, we were talking about if we made any major changes in a traditional method, design bid build, you have a hard bid. You accept that hard bid. And then if we go in and say, you know what? We want that flexible space now to be different. Is that going to potentially change, are we going to have to rebid the project or how does that work?
It really limits your ability to modify and change after you bid the project because you are dealing with a hard bid and there's really no advantageous reason for the low bidder to really work with you. Making changes if you want to make them, but if we have, you know, potentially multiple vendors that we're trying to ask the same modifications to, you know, they don't want to work with us, then we can say, well, okay, we're going to go to the next vendor and try to do the same thing. So there's, there's really a desire for them to work with you to resolve issues, whether it's the facility, the use of it, the cost. You can really get into the the level of detail with them.
Legally, sorry, legally for under traditional design bid build. For if the cost of changing it is more than ten percent of the original contract price, you have to rebid it unless there's some circumstances to take you out of the norm. So under traditional bid build, the threshold is ten percent, unless your contract's less than a hundred fifty thousand and threshold's fifteen thousand. But yeah, so if it's over, if it's fifteen, over fifteen thousand or ten percent, whichever is greater, you have to rebid it.
So so was there a decision then to to make this a lease leaseback, which is why the it was the designs were submitted in that way? Was was that, or has that, was that just sort of done without coming to the board? Because it sounds to me like this meeting probably should have been done five or six months ago before that determination, because now there doesn't seem to be any option for us unless we're going to push this off. You know, it's either we accept the way that it's already been submitted or it's going to be a delay of a year. And and I I will say, I have real concerns about lease leaseback, just because it, you know, there's the public contract code and the ed code is there. And to have an agreement that you only pay a dollar, just there's something And to have an agreement that you only pay a dollar, it just, there's something that doesn't sit right for me with leasing it so that we can get around the the competitive bid process. And so that's, that's my real concern. But I also, you know, I'm I'm really concerned about getting the building out and saving price, saving money. I just, no one, no one's told us yet, how do we, how could we do it the different way? So where we're at now, if we decide that we want to set it out to the apparently three modular companies, they come back with a with a bid, we accept it and we do it the old, the old fashioned way. Is it possible, how far does it push us off? You know, could we potentially save money on that type of a project or not?
Can I address the first part at least of your question? That was a decision conversation that we had in the facilities subcommittee associated with cost that we decided to go modular because of the cost for that particular building in and of itself. We made that, let me finish. We made that specific decision based on the cost of that. And I believe that part of what happened may not have been really clear to the board is that there was an assumption that that would be done as a lease leaseback, just the way Vicente was. And I don't know that that was conveyed clearly to the board and John.
Yeah, I mean, I'll take my responsibility, partial of it or all of it. You know, I think it's always been since like the first dollar was spent, we always sort of have been under this lease lease mentality. And then we did talk about it in like February of two thousand fifteen. I did not call a vote then, maybe I should have, but you know, it just seemed to me personally in October, whichever the months are. I have discussions, I got to learn to take notes better. Anyhow, I didn't call a vote as president because I just thought we were still going down the lease lease. And maybe I should have called the vote, so I'll take, you know, that part of it. But I don't think it was a, I think it was just been a general assumption because we've done lease lease all the way through. And we never, for the modulars, and we never have talked about bringing it back.
But you can, you can do the competitive bidding process on a modular, that is possible?
Yeah, I think like Jorge mentioned, it would, it would make them go back and redo some stuff to develop a package before we go out to bid.
I, you know, it would add about six weeks to two months to just do a lot more detail in engineering.
And I just want to emphasize, you know, again, when you're talking about the PCs, it really is a unique thing from the traditional design bid build. And we could go back and do the process. At the end of the day, there is the same limited gene pool of modular P C vendors that we're going to. So no matter which way we do it, we're probably going to the same vendors. So so we're going to end up at the same place no matter how we do it. So all we're saying is if we're going to end up with the same people, at at the end of the day, it's better to have a scenario where we can negotiate with all of them instead of trying to get three or four people to bid something as a hard bid when they may not be bidding the same. You know, it's not the same, everybody, every vendor has a different business plan, they build things a little differently. They have different structurings for how they do it. So, you know, even though at the end of the day they look very similar, doesn't mean that they got there the same way.
My, I guess, and this is my concern, my concern is, okay, if we get there the same way doing either one, we have a process that has some questions, it has litigation, it has some unknowns to what has been decided in the litigation. And it's, it's had some locally, it's had some real criticism of how how it's been done. And I just want, I, you know, that's why I wanted to discuss this. Because I think as, since some of those questions haven't been addressed, we're going to be, you know, following down that road if we do go forward with lease leaseback. And, you know, we already know that the other delivery system, you know, a six week, eight week delay in the big scheme of things, if it keeps us out of litigation, may be better.
That's also the reason, though, about the lease leaseback, we had a presentation from D W K back in October. That was the time, I mean, that was the purpose, was to have that conversation. And I think we can run scared from litigation, but we're hearing from our attorneys as well as from C S B A attorneys that as long as you do it correctly, lease leaseback is still a viable option and one that is fully legal. And I don't think, I think a six, a six week to two month delay means a whole year delay to the high school because of the construction noise and the construction costs. Not to mention, it's going to cost us a whole lot more money. We're already seeing cost increases. When we talk every time we meet in the facility subcommittee, we're looking at increased costs already because, just because the market is changing, there's just an increase in the costs. And if we do that, if we increase the cost by too much, we're not going to be able to do the other projects at Alhambra High School. In fact, we're constantly looking at whether or not we can do all of those current projects now, given the amount of money that we have. So I think, I mean, I, I understand your concern. I think that there's that same concern on almost anything else. If you do a design bid build and you accept the lowest bidder and that person is not, you have to accept the lowest responsive, responsible bid. The definition of that is really very loose, if you will. It means we basically accept the lowest bill bid. And then we run the risk of not having that be completed or a cost overrun that could significantly increase the cost. And there's been litigation about that, too. There've been other school boards that have been in a lot of trouble because of their whole bid, design bid build and the cost overruns that have been really pretty horrific. So you've got problems on both sides. We did not choose lease leaseback originally as a cost piece. We chose it primarily as a cost plus, we wanted more control over what the building would look like. And that gives us that option versus going out for a hard bid, building and and having to make a change and then having to go back and rebid. And I think you had an example of an almost not completed project.
Even though it was, you know, small in nature, when we were doing the summer work last year for Vicente, we went with the traditional design bid build and you get to accept the lowest bidder. And we were doing the work across Susanna Street. And, you know, we pretty much, you know, had to have a contingency plan, line up another paving contractor, potentially because they may not finish in time because they won't give us schedules, they wouldn't show up, they weren't performing. And, you know, we spent a lot of time coming up with a second plan in case they didn't finish on time. And obviously, if they didn't finish on time and we had to do that, we would have been in a lawsuit trying to figure out the cost for bringing somebody else on, so. Again, there, you don't, you don't know who you're going to get as your low bidder. Sometimes you're lucky and you get a great contractor. Sometimes you get somebody who's not so good, and that's the variable. And you don't know that till the day you go out to bid and you receive your bids, whether you're fortunate or not.
In this case, you're saying there's only about three options for us anyways that you're familiar with?
For the.
For this particular, for Building K?
For the P C vendors, yeah, it's it's very limited who they are. The one advantage of rolling it all like together, we, as we did with Vicente, is we were able to bring in local vendors as the site contractor who's, you know, has done a lot of good work for us. So we know we've got a good site contractor, we know we've got the the local fencing contractor. So we were able to introduce people who are local that we know are going to perform well. But if we just put that out on hard bid, we don't know who we're going to get. Again, it's a variable, we can't predict if we're going to get good people or bad people. I think, you know, we've been successful on bringing in a lot of local people on our projects. You know, we, we haven't had, the only change order that we had that was significant wasn't a contractor issue, was the soil at Los Santos, which we had to fix, you know, but that was an unknown. But everybody else has come in, we haven't had any claims, change orders. We've had people that have finished, you know, did, done good work and finished on time. And again, we've had more headaches with a a low bid contractor, you know, struggling to get them to complete on time than we have with bigger projects.
One of the criticisms of lease leaseback is that it actually costs more. Is that, is that because you you bid at the beginning, you you take the price and so you don't get any benefits of the cost at the end?
I think you, you, the scenario where it might cost more is because you're eliminating the problem contractors who made low ball to get the project. And we don't want those people on projects. So if there is an increased cost, it's because you're, you're trying to get better qualified contractors who are not going to necessarily give the cheapest numbers. In the scenario with with the P C building, I mean, it's not going to change. It's, they're not going to charge us anymore for an L O V on the P C building because that's what they do. That that vendor does that building, so it's, that number's going to be the same. It's just that we have more flexibility in making modifications if we choose to. I mean, in the design process with Tom, there's a lot of things that, you know, the site would like to add, but we can't add them unless we know we're on budget and then we can entertain some of those things. And that's kind of what we want to get to is like, okay, what can we afford, what can we move forward with? And do we got to change it up or down from there?
But then, would that logically say that if we did design bid build, we couldn't do that level of changing? Because we would have hard bid the contract.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah, it's either one, like Deirdre said, depending on the dollar value, we're limited on how much we can change dollar value wise. And then, again, the variable that we don't know is who's that contractor is. Are they, you know, meaningful, are they willing to work with us on those changes? Or they're going to say, I'm the low bidder, I'm not changing nothing. And, you know, again, that's from contractor to contractor, that's a different scenario.
In our lease leaseback agreement, do we, the new requirements of A B five sixty six, the monthly reporting, is that part of the charges that they're charging us now or is that incorporated within their contract?
That's incorporated in the contract and that is, A B five sixty six is something that will probably, you know, increase the cost, depending on who the vendor is, you know, for, you know, because some people have the thirty percent and some people don't. So, you know, if a contractor doesn't have that thirty percent criteria, then their price may be elevated for that. But that's all part of the contract when we go out, that'll be all included with the numbers that we get back.
I do, and I really appreciate all the clarifications and extra information and, you know, appreciate people being here today. But I'm going to echo some of Deirdre's concerns. You know, to me, this feels like a bit of a Hobson's choice. It's like we can have whatever we want as long as it's P C and done lease leaseback. And and I understand the time constraints, I want this building built. I I understand the concerns of Tom and and the staff and and the needs of the students. I live right by Alhambra, I don't want construction going on all year long. That will be disruptive to the neighborhood. But I'm really concerned about how we can get this done in the most cost effective way that benefits the community the most. So my next, my my question is to Deirdre and sort of echoing on the the thirty percent requirement and then the ratcheting up of you know, people who went through apprenticeship programs. How, can you explain more to me how a lease leaseback can work with a project labor agreement?
Okay, so basically the project labor agreement, it's an agreement that the district enters into with the trades and there's certain terms in it.
No, I'm I'm very familiar with how they work.
Okay.
I want to know, I mean, there's, on slide thirteen, the way that we can demonstrate our commitment to the skilled and and trained workforce is that there's two types of P L As that we can use. What is preventing us from doing that right now? Taking either one of these options, two or three?
Well, well, three, it depends whether or not the trades in your area have a have a P L A that has the A B five sixty six provisions in it.
What if we assume that they do?
Well, if they do, then if the contractor opts, that that's how they're going to demonstrate their commitment, they can choose that option. I mean, basically, how the statute's written is that the contractor has the option to do any of three
Right.
of of those choices. So one, there would be like, if there's a P L A and P L A would have the thirty percent journeyman requirement at all tiers as well from people who are from a graduate from an apprentice program. And then also, so what a P L A with the district now? Because some of the P L As before, it it depends, right? It it has different, different sizes, different projects that get put into the project labor agreement. And then sometimes there's certain negotiations that are made about people using their own forces so they don't have to lay off people to bring on other people to meet the quota. But this one would have, there would have to be at least that thirty percent journeyman requirement and that only apprentices and journeymen are used on apprenticeship occupations.
Right, given that, you know, we're in Martinez, California, which is a heavily unionized community where we have myriads of skilled building trades halls that run their own apprenticeship programs. And most men and women who carry these journeyman cards went through the apprenticeship programs without having a representative of the building trades council here, I I would feel comfortable stating that given that most of my friends and colleagues that are are journeyman tradesmen, tradespeople, carry journeyman cards because they went through the apprenticeship programs. My guess is that we could get a P L A relatively quickly that that definitely meets and exceeds the thirty percent requirement. So what what is stopping us from just going forward with that type of an option as far as the compliance portion of the lease leaseback?
Okay, and I'm I'm only going to speak to this specific project, not district wide. And and I'm I'm just giving the information because I'm not here as an advocate, a proponent or one way or the other. But in this particular situation, we were talking about a P C vendor, which, you know, is a contractor, but there really are a company that's been developed to provide buildings. And they've got a business plan. Not all of them are the same, some of them build the whole building themselves internally. Some try to prefab as much as they can in a in a shop and then bring it out. And some of them are more, you know, using, you know, go out and bid the individual trades. So they all have different business model plans. But no matter what they do, they all tend to bring a a skilled workforce that has done their buildings a lot. So the reason why they're a lot more efficient is because they've really customized, standardized their construction. And, you know, to me, it's more of like, you know, assembling a car, you know, you know, are you building a, you know, a custom car and sending it out for refab afterwards, or are you building it off of a line? So the district is getting a benefit from the price because they've economized and efficiency of the construction. And that component may affect them from not even being able to actually bid the project. They may just not be interested in it because, you know, now we're telling them, we want to buy your car off the line, but we're going, we, but we're going to tell you how to build it. And that's kind of what we're getting, we're meddling into that component if it's not just the the workforce piece of it. I don't know if I can explain that properly, but that, just trying to, and this particular project with somebody who is designed and building the building and there's a repetition, again, standardization. And I said, a lot of the people that do those buildings, the same people do the same thing over and over and over with them.
Sorry, excuse me, but are you saying that there are no P C contractors or or companies that utilize skilled, unionized trade labor?
Some do, I've said, I'm just, that's why I'm saying, they're not all the same. So you would be minimizing the number. I think the one, the one that's mostly does site building is the one that's doing Vicente for us. They pretty much, you know, bid out the trades and more amenable that. But even then, they've standardized some of the pieces. So even when they went to to bid it and we've got the bid results, you can see the people that go from them from school to school to school and do the same building. You know, they know exactly how to do it, they they know how long it's going to take them to do it and their prices reflects, reflect that.
Just to make a comment, because I don't have a dog in the town or whatever the expression is. You know, generally, you're going, I mean, just statistically, more, there's more union people who graduate from apprentice programs than nonunion because there's just more union programs and there are nonunion programs. And the requirement is basically, you know, forcing a certain amount of union labor to be on the project regardless of if there's a P L A. Also, I just want to say, like, I don't know particularly with the trades here. We were just at Cash a couple of weeks ago and some people from the trades were there. They said they don't have the numbers to meet the thirty, thirty percent. When we were at.
Where were you?
We're.
Cash.
Oh, Cash.
Yeah. I mean, but again, other unions, I've heard, like down in Southern California, I've heard them make the representations, they can make it. I I'm just saying, it's not necessarily foregone, I would check to see whether or not it was, if they felt that they have the numbers.
I mean, I guess my, where I'm trying to go with this is if we have a requirement to show compliance, one of the benefits of a project labor agreement is that that compliance is not on our shoulders. It it then gets deferred to the union halls. So if if we have that requirement, why not pass it on to the people who are doing the work and know how to monitor the work properly? Why would we add that extra burden to ourselves if there's three options per slide thirteen?
There's actually only two options on slide thirteen because we don't have a P L A. So the district doesn't have a P L A currently and we have not made the decision. So the district doesn't have a PLA currently and we have not made the decision to have one. Um, so they either have to do one or three where they have a contractor-prepped PLA. Because that's an entirely another subject that we would be talking about as to whether or not the district would have a PLA.
And, and I'm just gonna throw a little reminder because I like the lively discussion and the good questions, but we're gonna have a discussion on PLA next. So is, I, I wanna, I wanna make sure we stay on track, how it dovetails into if it does, but on lease lease back specifically. Um, so Jonathan, do you have any other questions about?
No, no.
Lease lease back, okay. Bobby, John, anyone? Okay. Um, so we're, we're all good? All right, let's, let's keep, let's keep going.
Whoops. Okay. So, um, segueing right into project labor agreements since it's already been discussed a little bit, I'm just doing, again, a bird's eye overview for everybody to understand a little more about what it is. And I'm gonna talk about the definition of what a PLA is, um, both the proponent arguments and the opponent arguments, and issues to consider in the use of the PLA for building K. So, um, one thing I just wanna say is that if you do research on, on project labor agreements, which are also known as project stabilization agreements, there is a lot of information. And in the proponent arguments and opponent arguments, what you find, what you see is they often say the same thing from different sides of the coin. So this is just information on sort of the, the key points of what it is. So the, the project labor agreement for, for our district would be a contractual agreement between Martinez Unified and a consortium of labor unions. And usually, it governs the, the work rules, the wages, benefits, and the dispute resolution, resolution processes. And it works similar to a collective bargaining agreement. So it's either signed before planning or when construction begins. And it can work for one specific project or as many projects as you want it to be covered. So generally, PLA includes the following conditions. The unions would agree not to strike or engage in other disruptive activities. Um, the employer and contractor recognize a particular union or a group of unions exclusive, who have exclusive barging, bargaining agent for employees on the project. Um, the contractor will hire exclusively from these union halls. So a few proponent arguments in support of PLAs. So they advocate for local, well-trained workforce. Uh, as you heard, they provide pathways for on-the-job career training and they have state-certified apprenticeship programs and trainees. They promote, um, the hiring of veterans and local residents. They reduce the risk of construction delays. Uh, they can reduce the risk of increased costs caused by work stoppages. Uh, they seek to ensure that skilled craftspeople perform the work that they have been trained to do. And there's many more than that. A few of the opponent arguments are that the project labor agreements actually limit competition and raise construction costs. They are characterized as union-only agreements, thus making it difficult for non-human workers to gain employment. Uh, one thing about the PLA is that, um, non-union contractors tend to prefer not to be bound by a PLA because if we, if the district has a PLA, it requires the non-union contractor to essentially act as a union contractor for the duration of the project by, um, they're required to pay union wages and contribute to union benefit plans. And they do not, according to the opponent arguments, they do not improve efficiency or reduce costs of the construction projects. So CSBA came out with a long list of issues to consider in using a PLA and these were recommendations from their construction management task force. So for Martinez Unified, some of the main ones would be, you know, will the district's construction goals be met or enhanced by the PLA? Does it take into account the board's criteria for quality, cost, and value, work delays, and apprenticeship, apprenticeship training programs? What is the level of the complexity of building K? Um, the duration would be for, for building K? And will it disrupt the, the supply of labor? Also, will it add any cost, um, to building K at Alhambra High School if we have the PLA? Will the best work be done? Um, and it goes on. There's a very long list. And attached to this document was on the, on your board docs was a three-page analysis as well.
All right, so time for questions on this. I, I have a question, just, I'll start. For, for building K, are there additional costs associated with using a PLA? Even, and, and let's just assume for, for that question that we're gonna do lease lease back. Because it, it's possible to do, right? It's possible to do lease lease back and a PLA for that, for that building only. Um, what additional costs could you foresee, if any?
Okay, and I'm gonna be specific again, you know, for building K, uh, just where we are. AB 566 is gonna add additional costs, probably. And again, again, not every vendor's the same. So it, it may hurt some vendors more than the other. And then, uh, a PLA would be additional cost on top of that. Again, different from vendor to vendor. It may force some of the vendors not to propose.
How, how would it cause more cost for vendors under the 566?
Uh, because for some of the vendors that have a huge in-house workforce, I mean, like, again, you know, I think of it as a car. They build the building. Their people come in and they build the building. Uh, so those people may not have gone through a specific trade union or a apprenticeship program to meet the 30%. So if they can't meet the 30%, then they're gonna have to add additional people to their forces, I'm guessing, to meet the percentage. Uh, but some of them are so heavily in-house that, uh, you know, they probably wouldn't even bid on the project because now they can't really bring any of their employees or they probably wouldn't bring any of their employees because they don't fit into that program.
But the 30% requirement is whether or not PLA exists or not. So, so in addition, that, I'm just, I, I understand there's more, there's going to be more cost regardless because of, uh, this requirement. But then, if we were to put PLA on top of it, how does that increase the cost?
I, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, so then to go to 30% might be one cost. If they have to go to 100%, then that's gonna be the differential. So some may, you know, say, well, it's worth the project. You know, I'll, I'll bring some people in to work with the people, my, my in-house crew. They may bring, do that. But if he says, I'm, I'm gonna build a building and I can't use any of my people, then they're not gonna be competitive or they're not gonna engage in the project.
We have to pay prevailing wage regardless, so the wage doesn't change.
Right, but it's the same thing. If, if, it's like, you know, here's analogy, if, uh... Here's analogy I use, you know, you go and, you, you go and, or you go to the Chevy dealer, you say, I wanna order a Chevy. And this, and the, the price to build a Chevy and the Ford, they get the exact same wage. So the wage is the same. But you say, I wanna buy a Chevy, but I want you to bring the Ford workers into your plant to build my Chevy. They're not gonna be as efficient and cost-effective. And that's kind of what it's doing. You know, you're, you're telling them who to build their building with. Not that they're not getting the same wage or any of that stuff. It's just, there's an efficiency of people doing the same thing repetitive. Or like I said... Right. Yeah. So it's not that you're changing the wage, it's just how they're actually doing it and who they're doing it with.
But if those contractors don't currently meet the 30% requirement, I mean, what, what actually changes? Because they're gonna have to go and seek out...
Right.
Workers who have been through the apprenticeship program, which in this area is more than likely through a local union hall.
Correct. So that's what I'm saying. And then, for some of them, that might be an increased cost to do so.
But they're assembling it here.
It, what John is saying is, depending upon who the vendor would be, who the PC building person is, they may be assembling most of it in Burlingame or San Mateo or wherever it is that their plant is, is set. Then when they come here, so they, they could add a few folks to get to the 30% and still meet the requirement. Then, but some of them, they're not gonna, if you have a PLA, it's saying basically you have to have either 100% of those folks, but you have to be union or you have to pay for the union benefits even though those employees will not receive those benefits.
But that depends on the type of PLA that you negotiate. You can have a PLA that is specifically for assembly onsite.
Specifically to this one, he, this particular building. Not talking about the benefits or not of PLAs at, period at this point. What we're talking about is building K specifically. And if we use the modular folks, I'm trusting what John is saying is that there are some of them who probably won't bid. That means we're limited more in our, what we can offer or what we can get for the cost that we're paying. And I'm seeing a couple of nods, so hopefully I'm interpreting that correctly.
I mean, it's just, just a lot of variables, you know. It's just, you know, it's not just a clean, you know, draw a line, it's this or that. I mean, just from vendor to vendor, it's different. And you have to see how that's gonna wash out, you know, in that process.
Right, it, it, sorry, but it all depends on the type of labor agreement that you negotiate. We could negotiate a PLA with the local trades specifically for assembly onsite and have no, you know, horse in the race for where and when it's constructed offsite. All that could be, you know, completely off the table as far as a project-specific PLA is concerned. But what I'm concerned with mostly, and people are probably wondering why I keep hammering on this point. We live in, in a community where a large number of our students' parents belong to local trade unions. You know, we, we have a disproportionately lower number of citizens who have a college degree, yet a higher-than-average area median, um, family income. You can draw a direct correlation to that, to high number of people who are members of, uh, trade and, and non-trade unions. Union wages tend to be higher, the benefits are better, and that's why our community thrives. And my concern is if we're talking about career pathways, how are we going to ensure that for our students who aren't going to go to a four-year college, who need a career post-graduation, that there are good skilled trade jobs available when they do? And the only way that we can ensure that is if we protect and foster those jobs today.
Any other board questions? It's not so much a question as I would prefer, personally would prefer to defer a PLA discussion to a, a much lengthier opportunity to, to hear the pros and cons again from the various folks who would come because I don't think it's... I, I have some real questions and concerns about a PLA. In this particular instance, I don't think a PLA would work to our advantage, partially because of modular building, but also because many of the local contractors that we use when we're assembling the local buildings are very small, mom-and-pop kinds of shops, if I'm not mistaken. And they may or may not have union labors, people working in them. But I don't want to sacrifice local labor, local, local businesses owned, again, locally by our families or within a certain radius in, in a short discussion for today. I'd rather wait for that discussion to come for other projects because we are looking at some significant, potentially significant projects in the future. I'd like to get this done.
And, and I think that's one of the reasons why we're trying so specifically to keep it just building K discussion because it does sound like there's some other things we need to hash out and, and we can talk as a board when we wanna bring that back. Um, I had a couple more questions with regards to PLA and I, I don't know who to direct it to. But one of the questions is, has anyone kind of locally done a modular building under a PLA? Because I know there's a lot of either school districts or, I think, the college board, other places that have done PLA and, and you may not know today, but I mean, it's something that maybe we can look into before we bring this back. Um, does anyone here have any experience to that?
I, I don't know of any specifically. You know, I know on a lot of projects that we've worked on that have had PLAs in projects, they've excluded these buildings from them, if that helps. Uh, because of, again, it's, it's just its own little, you know, world, the world that the PC vendors work in. So I, I know of a project where, you know, that was excluded from it, uh, from, for that reason. Uh, I did ask, I mean, I went out to the, the, again, the vendors that are doing, which I call these hybrid buildings like Vicente. I mean, these aren't people that just started yesterday. I mean, we were at the CASH conference and one of the vendors got a lifetime achievement award for 30 years of doing these buildings for a school. So, you know, these level of people are really established, you know. And again, they're, I call them entrepreneurs, you know, they're kind of like, they've developed their own market and probably spent a lot of money doing that. So they're not just, uh, you know, people that just shot, started yesterday and, and don't know what they're doing. You know, they're really qualified. So that's kind of like the thing. But I went out to the three that are real prominent and they all indicate a right of thought. You know, either it would affect them from bidding it or they would bid it, but their prices would go up, you know, tremendously. Because, you know, even though they're paying the same way, they're, they've got crews that travel with them doing those, you know, those components of it. And again, it's different from vendor to vendor. So it's not like a blanket statement. You can say, they all do it, they all do it differently. You know, the end product is very similar, but how they get there is very different.
I think Deirdre was asking, though, if you've worked with any, for instance, any of the school districts? Because several of our local school districts around us have either PLAs for some projects or a blanket PLA. Have any of them built a modular building under PLA? Kind of what you were asking, I think, right?
Yeah, and, and I don't know of any. Uh, again, in the modular environment, a lot of, most of them are very small projects. A lot of districts that we work with, they have a cap of anything under a million would be excluded. So when you're doing a typical district improvement and it's just, you know, three or four or five classrooms, you know, they're under the threshold, so they don't apply. Uh, but I don't know of, uh, any that I, I don't, I haven't done any, but I, I don't know.
And, and then the last question I had is, can't we, within, if we did tailor a PLA, we could identify a certain percentage of our own, you know, graduates or, um, people that we have within our pathway programs? And aren't there, isn't there some, um, support, um, or programs that are offered under these PLAs that we could utilize at high school, adult school, any of those things?
I'm sorry, you'd have to ask the trades because when I've negotiated them before, it depends because sometimes the programs that we were thinking, it's what they're willing to offer. Because, um, it, it's just, it's part of negotiation, as Jonathan had said earlier. Um, some of them, they're like, well, we're not willing to bring any apprenticeship programs here because we have one in the county next over, you know, and we spent a lot of money with, for that thing in, in that county. So it's, it's, they're not gonna necessarily open another thing. But they did things like with the kids where they'll have a career day, a career day where they can help them get into the trades if they wanted to. So it just depends on what they're willing to do and what programs are already set up. And it's, it's, it's a negotiation thing.
Aren't, aren't there some opportunities here in Martinez that have already been explored?
Not currently, no, not currently. We're... We actually checked, I mean, I've spoken to, who was it, Tom, hmm, sorry, brought him to see you.
Oh, Bob Lilly is the person that I, that I know that we spoke of. The, the adult school has explored a, a grant where they were looking into pre-apprenticeship program. But, um, at this point, we do not currently have anything in the works. Don't to say that we couldn't, and I think down the road, that may be. One of the things you discussed, though, the idea of this negotiation, just in terms of our timeline, I just think that's another variable to consider. You know, I know at one point we said, well, it's a no-brainer to get a PLA. I don't know that that's true. I think it is a multi-step process. We've never been engaged in that. And in order to start looking at some of these options and to really explore, I just would like you to keep factoring your own thinking that that's another layer that would need to take place in order, you, you could do a PLA for this project, but i- is this the right project to begin that with? That, that's something to consider. Um, later on in the agenda, item 6.1, are a lot of documents around the lease lease back, would those need to be changed? those need to be changed? Would that delay the, if the decision was to go with a lease-leaseback and then also a PLA, then those documents would also need to be modified? Would that be correct?
The facility and site lease wouldn't have to be modified in order to have a PLA. Probably, I'm sorry, the facility lease and site lease, the documents that I talked about earlier about lease-leaseback, um, those wouldn't need to be modified if you had a PLA. Those would just continue to be the same. No, prequalification would remain the same.
Yeah. Any other ques, any other questions on PLA and we'll move on to the next, what is?
Next steps.
Next steps.
I just had.
Oh, okay.
Just a quick comment. Just want to thank you for calling this meeting and having this discussion. Very important. Thank you.
So we'll move on to the next steps on Building K. Diane? Okay.
Well, so that was really the board discussion on if we're going to, what we want to do with Building K, that we need to choose the delivery method because that will decide the timeline. So that was really the board discussion.
Um, I, I, before we move on, I know from my own personal, I guess, clarification, can we go back again as far as the timeline? I mean, as far as how we can get the projects at the high school delivered? Are there any other options? I mean, can we do some of the modernization if this, if the building was delayed? And part of it, I ask, just because what we've experienced, and part of my questions too today, is, you know, we've been, since I've been on the board, we've been talking about Vicente Brionis and, and this delivery method, which we still haven't had delivered. So that's why part of it is, I haven't seen it. But also now that we have experienced what delay feels like, I feel like we should probably always keep in mind what does delay look like as far as this project? Um, you know, whether it's, we decide a different delivery method or we find something that delays us, does that mean the whole project gets kicked? Or is there? I mean, right, that's a, right. So, so is there a way, if there was a delay, for us to get the modernization that we need done or, or not? That's my question.
From the facilities committee, we've talked about that, but part of the problem is the bulk of the money would be going to, to Building K. So without knowing the cost of Building K, because that's our top priority is the, is the classrooms in order to house the kids that are going to start arriving on Tom's doorstep next year. Uh, and I don't know how many of those kids we're talking about, we're talking about a certain number over a period of time, but we're still talking about more kids next year and the year after and the year after, not to mention the needs for the career technical education and all of that piece. Part of the problem was we realized we couldn't do the other projects until we know how much this one's going to cost because honestly, we don't know if we have enough money to do all of them and we're kind of looking at what order would we do them in. But we need this first, or at least the cost fairly firm first.
And the other component is Building D is contingent on moving the kids into the new building. So we don't even, we've already deferred Building D to next year because of, you know, it's a leapfrog component. So we've already partially done that.
While we've discussed the modernization, as Kathy is saying, and F&amp;H, perhaps we could do H1 of, you know, the, the two H classrooms, but the remaining piece would be very iffy to do without, without knowing what the budget is because there may not be money to do that. And, and then there is the economy of scale, if you're getting into H&amp;F, to start doing modernization to do two and then not do the others, may not be as efficient or cost-effective. So, you know, really the, 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 the key decision needs to be made, what are we doing with K? And if the decision is to go forward with lease-leaseback as we have planned, then the timeline holds. If it's to go back and do a different method, then that, that changes things dramatically. If you decide to add a PLA or not, those are other variables. And then of course, as you know, on the agenda is the decision about whether or not to move forward with the prequalification because that's one of the steps that needs to happen in order for us to even remotely be able to meet the timeline that we've established, which is aggressive as it is.
Um, I, I think I can add that we could do H, the two classrooms in H this summer. Those are slotted as summer jobs, so they're really a no-impact type of project, and that's what we're planning on. Ju- just those, just those two classrooms.
Okay, so I think we're now in the portion where it's board discussion. We've had some discussion. Um, are there any other questions just to kick us off? No? Okay. Um, does anyone want to volunteer to discuss anything or is there any particular order? You guys want to go?
Well, I've been pretty vocal. I think I would like to move forward with the lease-leaseback for Building K because I think that's our best bet now and defer any other conversations about whether or not we go to a PLA to a future meeting. I don't want to do a PLA for this particular building.
Any other further discussion?
Um, like I said, thank you for the information and everything. If we're building this from the ground floor up and not doing the module build out, I think a PLA would be a great discussion to continue with it, but I think with the module and where we're having this timeline, um, I just think it would be better to go forward with the huge emphasis on that we do want to support local trades, we do want to support local business people, which I think John's been very cautious and, first two, sorry, Don, I mean, ignore you first. And I think the last two hundred and eighty percent was local. Is that right? Yeah. Very high. So with that continued emphasis that we want to try to keep this very localized and then if we do get extra money and we are able to do extra projects later on in life, I think a PLA discussion is very appropriate to go forward with.
Bobby?
I don't want to eliminate the, the discussion of PLA for future projects. Uh, I think it's something that we definitely need to look at, uh, but I also think that in terms of our timeline and having sat on the facilities committee and realizing that everything right now is contingent upon getting Building K up, running so that we can get into the next projects, uh, I think that we need to move forward with, with Building K on the lease-lease. Again, it seems like there was an assumption made. I don't think John should take responsibility for that assumption. I think that it was made collectively and, uh, but I think at this point, uh, it would be prudent to go forward with it, but keeping in mind that we have a lot of projects and if we pass another bond, we have even more projects. And I certainly want to revisit the PLA discussion before we start any other project.
I mean, I, I think I've made my views known about the PLA, but, um, you know, given that, I, I do believe that this project needs to move forward. I'm, I'm concerned about the timeline. I've discussed this with Tom at length and, and you'll see, you know, an obvious need for it also, not, not just for the building itself, but for its impact on future projects. I, I certainly do not want to give up a discussion about PLA. I would prefer that we try to negotiate one now for this project, but I don't think that my view would prevail in a vote at this point, so no one to say when.
Um, well, first of all, I wanted, I wanted to thank you guys for, for doing this because I really feel that even, even if we don't agree on whatever happens with this particular issue, I feel that we're going to support each other and, and support the project. So I hope we continue to move in that direction. I, I have a very strong opinion of lease-leaseback, which I'm sure you, you guys get. I understand completely that it's legal. I have, you know, I question, I question the ethics of having, you know, some sort of legislation that kind of dovetails around other legislative requirements. And so, you know, that's where I get cautious because it just, you know, to me, it's, it's tough to, it's tough to swallow, you know, shifting, shifting burdens and ownership just through pieces of paper so that we can get around some of the requirements of other, of other codes. So, you know, I think it's going to be a tough one to change my mind on that, but I certainly understand. I mean, I, I want to go forward with the high school. I want to save costs. I mean, obviously we want to get our kids in, into classrooms that are modern and that are gonna, going to be appropriate for what they need for, for learning. I'm a little, I'm a little disappointed and I'm not pointing blame at anyone, but I think we should be cautious moving forward, that we're always kind of looking collectively as to presently, what does the landscape look like as we're going out for different projects, you know? If we would have had this conversation before, maybe we would have had a different outcome. You know, maybe we, we wouldn't have spent the money on submitting project, you know, documents to DSA, but that's hindsight. Um, so I, I just want to, again, I want to thank staff and, and everyone else here today for taking the time to give us the information. And I also wanted to open it up for anyone else here. Is there anything else that we're missing, something from a different perspective? I mean, Tom, you came in today's, yeah?
Uh, well, I myself is looking to learn too about these different models. I've heard a lot of jargon, you know, over the last, so now I'm better educated about it all as well. Obviously, um, you know, I appreciate that we're going to be moving forward still on a, on a tentative timeline where this could happen. You know, from my point of view, I, while I'm eager to see the work done and I'm appreciative of this one because there has been a degree of expectation, you know, that been set and as we're trying to envision how we're going to move all these projects forward. But that said, I appreciate that the board was going to be open to further discussion about other projects that we might have and how those could be delivered. Um, I think there's a lot of, from just learning and hearing the different points of you today, there may be numerous viewpoints that should be considered and weighed in and however those bring about these buildings to Alhambra, um, you know, for the good of the community will be appreciated. But, um, yeah, look forward to continuing to see if we can't pull this off for the summer with the direction we have today.
Well, you know, I've, I've taken a lead role in the district with our career technical education and our various pathways, and we have an advanced manufacturing and engineering pathway. Certainly I've worked with Kathy on the Adult Ed Consortium as well. One of the goals and one of the recent grants that she applied for was to bring young women into the trades and to begin to explore that. I would love to be able to do that thoughtfully without feeling like I'm trying to rush something through, and I feel like a, a deeper discussion of what that would look like, how we might accomplish that goal, how we might look more deeply at what it is that we're trying to do beyond certainly, you know, the jargon of wanting to, you know, I want to get more of this or more of that. I really want to see what is it that we could do if we were to pursue a PLA that would deeply impact the, the way that we do business here in Martinez and how those apprenticeships could feed our pathway programs, both in the adult ed community as well as our schools. Um, I don't, I don't know that we can do that fast. I don't know fast is the goal. I think the goal is to do that really, and really explore what the various aspects are. I think there are some programs, there's a, an ACE program that they do in Mount Diablo that I've always thought was very intriguing around the trades, that I, I'd like to see what that looks like and maybe give ourselves some time. John Swett has a, a great one with electrical engineering. And it, you know, maybe that's an opportunity for us to really flesh out that pathway and to be able to do something that we want to do that would be meaningful, both in this direction for PLA's and future projects that we might have in the district.
Can I say, I really appreciate your statements from me and I too am a huge proponent of recruiting and training and retaining women in the trades as well as members of minority groups. And I, I feel that the Contra Costa Building Trades Council has done an exemplary job of reforming themselves. I mean, to be honest, there was a long period of history in the trades labor movement where it was a white guy only club and the men and women that I know through my work at the Central Labor Council are incredibly diverse and share our views 100%. So anything that we can do to work collectively to, as you said, begin working on projects to recruit and, and train our students of, of all walks of life to, to consider a career in the trades, I would be completely in support of.
So, um, we're going to have this matter agendized for our meeting and we'll be, I'll be asking you if there's anything to vote on. So I, I don't, we don't want to get that, but the one thing that I am hearing is that at some point in the future, we want to have a, regardless of the outcome, with this particular project, have a furthermore in-depth, more robust discussion. I will just say, I'd like to, I'd like to see it happen sooner rather than later just because we've gone through this work, we've gotten some discussion. I think if we sit on it too long, it gets stale, but I know we have a lot of work to do this, this spring on things that, that need our attention. So if for whatever reason we don't revisit this sometime soon, someone please bring it up at the end of one of our board meetings that we need to re-agendize it so that we don't lose this, the information and discussions that we have. Great.
Even if it's for a long time, we can always just address it.
Perfect. Okay, that sounds great.
I kind of agree with you about, we've had a lot of discussion today. My concern is we don't, except for this, I don't think we have any more major projects coming up, so I'd like to delay the discussion to a time when we're close to that and have something concrete to be talking about. Because having a discussion when, when, when we're, when it's really not going to impact anything until, you know, six or eight or 10 months down the road, maybe we can have a portion of the discussion so it doesn't go away, but I don't think, I honestly, unless we're going to have a major project coming up, I don't, I would not be comfortable making a decision either way about a PLA or non-PLA.
I think one of the problems, and this is my own personal one, we can bring this up, but I think one of the problems with that is that I know when we discussed, we discussed this previously, which was I think last, last February, that we didn't have any projects because we were still trying to figure out what we were going to spend the money on, on, on phase two. And so then now we have, and this is sort of our first project that's coming out of the gate, and I, I just, I, I think it's, for me, I think it's good that we can at least keep some momentum on that. Tom, you had a?
Jorge, can I just ask a question? We talked about the sort of domino effect here. The next up would be D, which is maybe, we hope, potentially a year away before we're actually working on it, but we've already started talking about plans. I guess what would be the timeline for which this conversation would become relevant for D?
Um, we actually have started plans and in the schedule that I had in my presentation, Building D is just going to get put on the back burner for now, but then I believe we would be looking at submitting to DSA in, around November or December of this year so that we would be well-positioned after approval to get an early bid when contractors are hungrier, so.
And I, I'd like to just say, look, maybe we should get into a, a habit of at least giving us some, some leadway so that we're deciding how things are going to be delivered so that we, you know, we, we take every opportunity, the board's fully informed, you know, when, when we do the project updates, you know, when we need to decide on the delivery method. I think that way we don't run up, run into the problem of getting jammed up.
Well, that's something that Bobby and I've talked about, that we, as the representatives, need to do a little better job of keeping you all informed and making a report. If, if that's my recollection, I'm pretty sure it just didn't go forward because nobody wanted it on the agenda, not because we didn't have something to do. It was really a decision not to make a decision at that time.
All right, well, if there are no further questions or comments regarding... All right, well, if there are no further questions or comments regarding, oh, 6.1, is the resolution, oh.
So that's on the agenda.
All right, so that's on the, hang on a minute.
Agenda for action.
Yeah, for action. Okay, so this resolution adopting prequalification process for lease-leaseback developers and MEP subcontractors for lease-leaseback project for Building K pursuant to Public Contract Code Section 20111.6.
So we've had the discussion actually before. So I will make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2016-9.
Wait, first, we have to have any, well, we have to do any?
It was like we had already discussed it, that's what I was saying.
Are there any, first of all, are there any questions for the board about this? Okay, any public comment? Bringing it back to the board.
Then I move, we adopt Resolution Number 2016-9.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I oppose. All right, motion carried. Sorry.
I was only in the first resolution, so I'll make the motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2016-10.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I oppose. Motion carried. Number eight, comments from superintendent, board members, future agenda items. Anyone have any additional comments?
I'm just looking at number eight, try to avoid surprises. I'm going to want to be reviewing the bully policy, athletics, drugs, and weapons policy sometime in the future. I don't need to pull it right now. But there are certain issues that I'm trying to deal with and just want to give the board the heads up that I will be exploring these issues later on.
Any other four comments? No, we're good, all right. So before we adjourn, again, I wanted to thank everyone for coming here. I wanted to talk to dear Deidre. It should be Deidra, but that's it. I accept it, you spelt it the right way. And Jorge and John and Bruce, thank you for coming and Tom for coming and missing some time. I think we've had a good discussion. I think we have lots of things to think about coming up. And we're going to adjourn early. So our next regular meeting is Monday, March 14th. So we'll see you in a week. Okay, we're adjourned.